Okay, aloha everyone. We'd like to get started. We'll start today's meeting with a pool being offered by Commissioner.
Again for another opportunity to gather as the Hawaiian Homes Commission to do our and to serve our purpose to perpetuate the legacy of Prince Kohiyo and to serve our beneficiaries. We ask again that you be in our presence in this room as we deliberate, as we and as we do the work that has been set for us. We again pray for all of our good people who are working in the department, our chair, all the way down to everyone who helped to get today ready for our meeting. We ask your safe passage on all of our commissioners and our attendees who might be traveling. We are but most of all, we ask your presence as we do the work today and as we fulfill our to our beneficiaries. Be with us not only today, but the rest of this week. All these things we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus the Christ. Amen.
The meeting of the Hawaiian Homes Commission is called to order. The meeting is being held live and in person at Hali Poonoi, 5420 Kapole Parkway, Kapole Oahu, and virtually via Zoom. I am Kali Watson, Chairman of the Hawaiian Homes Commission, and today's date is Tuesday, June 27, 2023. The time is 9:36. Please follow the rule. Okay, the order of the day, we'll start off with the public testimony. And then I guess we'll then take up item F3, which was deferred from yesterday, then item D6, then the J agenda, and then at 12 noon, the commissioner will recess for lunch for 30 minutes. At 2:30, the commissioner will recess for contested case hearings for approximately 60 minutes. Yeah, and the public testimony, the agendas items, again, for the sake of, I guess, out of courtesy, as well as allowing us to run this commission in a timely and efficient manner, I'd ask that the testifiers limit their testimony to five minutes. And this is really to allow everybody to testify, and I think that's very important, and we appreciate you and anticipated courtesy in that manner. So it'd like to first start with a little acknowledgement and I guess a show of appreciation for departing Commissioner Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm gonna need my. But this time, we just want to the commissioners, we all got together and we wanted to wish tonight that the primary commissioners have to be departing to be staff. I'm gonna thank you for everything. Enjoy yourself. We look forward to working with you together. Thank you so much. All right, thank you.
I guess Russell is on to another phase in his life. Hopefully, I'll be a lot more productive and as productive, I should say, as productive. But I want him to be more productive, actually. So we're gonna really look forward to working with Russell, and I know there's some good things that will come out of here. Okay, for our public testimony, the first we'll call Blossom.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, mahalo for the opportunity to speak in support of item D6. As a person who at one time did this kind of work, I can tell you that even back 20 years ago, getting funding for construction loans for Hawaiian homelands was like pulling teeth. And so the opportunity for Hawaii Community Lending to have this partnership as a department that can help move our beneficiaries on the land in a timely manner is very welcome. And so I would ask our commission to vote in support of this item. Mahalo.
Thank you, Blossom. The next testifier is Jeff. Jeff Gilbreath.
Aloha, Kako. Jeff Gilbreath, what's Hawaii Community Lending. Mahalo, folks, for bringing this matter forward. I'm speaking in support of item D6. I appreciate the conversation we had yesterday. To Blossom's point, there's only a handful of construction lenders currently on Hawaiian homelands. By taking action on approval of this recommendation from Loan Services Division, the commission would be ensuring that beneficiaries have at least one additional option. And from an entity that was founded for and by home settlers who are on the waitlist trying to make it onto the land. And so I appreciate you folks and speak in support of item D6. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Let's see, the next item on the agenda is F3, annual write of entries for Oahu. Kahana?
Mr. administrator land manager division also got a Kali Young land agent with us. I know yesterday, this agenda item specifically subject annual renew on Oahu Island, it was tabled or deferred to today because we need to update the commissioners as to payments that had been made by those per- permits that are listed as delinquent or highlighted by the yellow highlight with that click and after that.
Good morning, everybody. Those tenants that were highlighted in that mustard colored yellow, I organized them in three different categories. One is it definitely came in and paid up. The next category is they called. And they said, sent payment in, and they sent me copies of checks. Let me kind of back up a little bit. The second group, the chairman signed the letter and it was mailed out on the June 15. So which is a Thursday. So a lot of these businesses have peel boxes. So by the time they stand in line and get their certified letter, it's already like the it was the middle of last week. So by the time they mailed the checks in. And it hits our office, a lot of those checks have not been posted. So those are the ones I'm saying, maybe we should give them another two weeks before to give all the postings to take place. Yeah. And then the third category is people who haven't contacted me at all. I've made calls to them, say, hey, what's going on? And they haven't returned my calls. So the first group was definitely made payment. Would be write of entry 512 Cummings Ranch. 607 Kahu Trucking. 628 D2 Welding. 637 TNC Plumbing. So those ones I recommend that we renew without any question. The second group. Winei Valley Farm. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 527 Winei Valley Farm. 605 Hawaiian Steam. 613 Leala Cook. Those three, when they got the letter, they, as instructed, gave me a call. Two of the Hawaiian Steam and Leala Cook both did. Did you receive the check yet? Did you receive the check? And I have to explain that it goes to our mailroom, it probably sits in an accounting desk. So by the time it's not showing up as posted, that doesn't mean that we haven't received checks. But because like I was trying to say that a lot of these things might have just trickled in the end of last week, they might be sitting in someone's train, has not been posted yet. So I'd like to say, maybe we give us give a couple of weeks to kind of consider these. And I know these three that I just mentioned. You know, over years, if you're a landlord, you know which are your good people, your honest people, and you know which guys are guys who just blow smoke. These three are actually good. When they say they made 10, 10, they came in, I believe them. And the next category. It's 636 Poonui. 623 Donahue. Yes, Poonui has not been returning my calls. And Donahue, I talked to him yesterday. He says, oh, yeah, yeah, I can, I can be, I can make good in August, I think was his date. So he's one of those that he always falls behind. I'm recommending that we not renew him.
What numbers?
I'm sorry, that'd be write of entry 623. Donahue.
What about 636? Are you recommending not renewing him also?
Well, it's just, I left messages and I don't get a call back. So I, and it says, if you have, you know, to call me and, you know, at least, so the responsible guys that called and say, hey, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, they were coming in and this. So. And this is one last one that is a unique situation. This is Monalee Trucking. Right, they're behind like.
639.
Yeah, they're behind about 75,000. Last week, Friday, she came in and paid 25,000 and. Wants to make a payment plan where she paid $6,000 a week. To come good in. And she told me that, well, first of all, the original person who signed the lease passed away about a year ago. So there was a manager managing them. And for some reason, or whatever. Long story short, he passed away in March. Yeah, 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 this year. Oh, you know.
Chase Roman is a winner. He passed away in March.
So the niece of the original person who signed the lease is kind of coming in and trying to get everything settled. But she says she has a big contract with Hawaiian Cement, and it's doable for her to, yeah, doable to come current in 60 days. So I have a letter here. I maybe I'll pass it, I can pass it to everybody and look at it, but.
So you recommend we.
We give our, yeah.
You're a chap.
That's number 639 Monalee.
Okay, what else?
And that's it.
I have questions.
Okay, we don't have a motion, but you want to say something, Commissioner?
Yes, I do. Before you have a motion, thank you for the highlight, Kali and Kahana for that. And yeah, and it's concerning when 639 Monalee, I understand, Chase Roman, who's the owner, passed away in March. So his niece is running the show right now. But when it's 75,000, when I see that high number, it's like two years that they didn't pay their rent. And I think that should flag us because when I looked at the 2022, right away, they were in good standing. There were nothing outstanding on that particular Monalee. And so this is 2022, no delinquent, nothing. And then 2023, 75,000. So I question, how did that happen? How did they get there? When 2022, they were not a delinquent at all? And so how did they get in 2023 to be 75,000 back?
Yeah, and I mean, it could have been a number error in that, in that case. I mean, that's the only thing I can think of. Yeah.
The other one I'd like to recommend is 636 Poonui. This has come to this commission many times. And this ROE, this commission gave them a break when they were behind. We told, remember, we discussed that they could get caught up and on and on, and they wanted to make sure they paid, they could stay. And they're telling us, if we pay, can we stay? If, you know, and so these guys are now back again in 2023, they're delinquent. And so, you know, it's not a good, good thing, you know, when they're, they're back like that way, especially that, that particular ROE, when we gave him a break and making, you know, wanted him to catch up on his payment. So that I would really consider the commission to look at 636 is that how many times do we give these guys a break? I mean, you would agree with Poonui. And going to that, I'm not going to get into that, the yard and everything. But I guess that's what I have for now. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
Miss Nell?
Yeah, it's very disturbing to see nine delinquent ROEs. And my concern is, what are we going to do for the future? How are we going to have this being avoided? Is there any? Strategy or new plans? So we don't get to this point? Because this is really ridiculous.
So as I had pointed out yesterday. Wine Homes is one of the few property management outfits that I know of that doesn't have these delinquent letters sent out automatically. The accounting system that we. That, well, yeah, a long story short. We are working on. Having the accounting system be done automatically. Everybody else, I'm gonna say nationwide has been doing it. So I.
Short of that, I mean. All this time, we've been doing notices of delinquency. And we have, as agents, should be up in providing that information to the subject permittee. Every month, there is a agent report that comes to us with invoices that go, comes through our office, through LMD. Agents look at these, these invoices and note if there are any delinquents, they would send delinquent notices, whether it be just an update, friendly reminder, your rent is due, or a notice of default kind of thing. So until such time, we get this program, it could help us. But we, as agents, are responsible to send out those notices.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we're looking at is to, you know, over our system of management, we're looking at, maybe in part, we are actually looking to bring in a consultant to, as I always say, bring us into the 21st century. The programming really, it has to be like automatic, as well as the notices going out automatically. So we're upgrading our Salesforce program. We're also going to look at, maybe there's another way to do it. And then, you know, I guess Commissioner Koupoo, that's going to be one of his tasks to help, as well as look for outside help or guidance to improve it. One of the things right off the top of my head is the way that we receive the rent payments. You know, like in the private sector, we have these drop boxes where they just deposit with the bank and immediately, you know, it's deposited to the account and we have a record as it be deposited. So you can tell on the day it's deposited that it's in there, rather than waiting and seeing what the situation is with the mail or the processing in the at DHHL. So definitely can make a change easily on that. It's just a matter of notifying the tenants that this is a new process and approach.
And we've had inquiries about from lessees also asking if we have those automatic payments.
So we're gonna kind of get a handle of this. You know, that was one of the criticism in the audit that was done, our collection process, which even the audit was incorrect because when we actually look at the numbers, it was way off. So it wasn't as bad as they were showing, but still, it was bad enough to get their attention. So that's one of the areas that we'll be taking a look at.
How often, Mr. Chairman, does the department go out and do inspections on these ROEs? I'd like to know that.
It should be annually. It should be annually.
All these ROEs from Kalalua to Waianae?
Yes. So all the Waho write of entries, all the, I mean, Waho, Molokai, Maui, Big Island, and Kauai.
Yeah, that's another thing. On the outer islands, we're looking at picking up land manager slash enforcement personnel for each of the islands, with exceptional on I. And so that also will assist in a more timely inspection, as well as response if there's issues, you know, that need immediate attention. Regarding these annual inspections, I think we'll probably do a lot more than annual. But that's something that, you know, take a look at and figure out what's the most efficient and what's warranted. Obviously, areas where there's a lot of problems, we'll inspect more often and also take actions against, for example, Mapuna Puna is one tenant that's kind of helping the homeless out there and selling stuff to them. So that is a no-no under its lease. So we're gonna have to take steps to change that. But getting back to the action item today. I guess the. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt a motion, and then maybe you guys specifically identify the changes on the original motion where you want to delete those for an extension. Okay, so is there a motion? Okay, and then can you guys?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the motion? Who made the, who made, who's making the motion? Point of order. What is the motion, please?
It's a motion to adopt or, yeah, the write of entry permit. If you look at the item. F3. It kind of lays it out, Commissioner Turia. There's three parts to it, A, B, and C. Then what I'd like to do is, rather than rely on the attached exhibit, I want the staff to identify those that are excluded regarding extensions.
So am I understanding that the chairman, you're entertaining the motion?
Yeah, we're.
You are making a motion?
Well, yeah. I'm not making a motion.
Oh, okay. So I, but I'm asking the motion maker, what is the motion?
To adopt or approve item F3. And what we're going to do is amend the or make an attachment that more accurately reflects those tenants that were doing the extension, approving the extension on the ROE.
And highlighting those that are not going to be extended.
Exactly.
I, I, I don't, I kind of lost because I don't think the chairman has a.
No, I'm not making the motion.
I understand, but somebody should be entertaining the motion at this time. I mean.
Well, I'm entertaining it, but the motion maker is.
So my question was, who is the motion maker?
Yeah, Randy War made the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we in discussion?
You're in discussion.
Jack, could I? So just to state my understanding. On the entirety of this exhibit, A. A1 or. Exhibit A. We're going to renew everybody on this list with the exception of highlighted green because they're already terminated. The, the kind of golden rod or yellowish highlighting. By category, the first category being those people who have concurrent. So we're going to renew them. Second category is people who said, check is in the mail, or I sent it in. And I'm going to ask that we not wait a couple of weeks to go find that check. I suggest we do that today. I don't know what the process is, but go find that desk where the, where the check is sitting and update the, update them, because that means they move into category one, right? They've, they've come clean. And if they're, if they're not telling the truth, then they fall out. And then category three. I understand there's three leases in category three, and we're going to not renew. 623 Donahue. And 636 Poonui. But we are going to go with a workout on 630 Monalee Trucking.
639.
Sorry. Monalee Trucking.
And what about 605? You're in category three. Two, okay, two. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So so far, am I, am I correct?
Correct.
Chair, I also want to add to the discussion. There was some mention yesterday about egg, egg ROEs, and the fact that we have non beneficiaries who may be using the egg ROE for residential purposes. And. I don't, I don't, I don't think we can allow that. The, I mean, I'm sure these are, you know, fine families and individuals, but our, our call, our duty is to beneficiaries to put them on the land. And if there's some potential for residential, even if it's an ag lot, that should go to a beneficiary. So I would suggest that the ROEs that are designated agricultural. Including the one that is designated commercial slash agricultural, that we not renew those ROEs. And if I understand correctly, that puts them in holdover status. And at the same time, we work with Paula and her people to start working off of the Oahu Ag List to see if there is folks who are interested in any of those lots. So I'm not suggesting we go and kick everybody out now, because that would be, it's quite a task for, for this group, under manned as we are. But that we, we do it in a systematic way. Let people know that they're not supposed to have residential and that let the people who are on the egg waitlist. Someone was able to do residential on these lots that are determined to be insufficient infrastructure, subsandra lot size, or irregular shape. So if somebody's willing to, to take that and work with it, I say it should go to a beneficiary.
Just to add, clarify, write of entry number 591, commercial ag one, Alun Farm. That's part of our East Kapole too. So portions of their area is being taken for residential development. So just, just for information on that. So we're looking, I believe, any part of this year to withdraw some of the lands that they have for continued residential development.
Some, but not all.
Some, but not all, but even. Some, but not all, but eventually, you know, it's gonna move more to eventually all residential development.
Eventually, all of that is gonna become, that's all part of
East Kapolei too.
Too.
Yeah.
Do you know if it's C, D, E, or?
I don't know.
Okay, so that may be, that may be an exception is what you're saying. Because that's already slated to be taken. So we wouldn't roll over their, their are you suggesting that we roll over their ROE and then we exercise the 30-day termination?
Correct, yes.
When we need to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So take that one off the list.
Yeah.
But, but then that means there is, what I was mentioning about not renewing, I think that means there's three ROE that is agricultural, 525, 590, and 600.
No, there's
Is there more?
Waimea Valley one.
That's
What, what number is that?
527.
527, sorry. And then the other one, 511, Laiman.
Right.
Those two, two, Russell.
527.
527 and then
They're pastoral lots.
527 and 511.
But 527, isn't that in category one of our?
No, I had them in two.
Category two.
He called to say, hey, I mailed in the check. I was strictly talking only about delinquency, not about the other issue which she
So the suggestion is, in addition to the ag parcels, take back the or not renew the pastoral parcels to see if there's someone on the Oahu pastoral list that would like to use those properties.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll add that to my discussion or my
Okay.
Okay, so I don't know if we ask Commissioner Wu to amend his motion or do we draw and make a new motion? I'm not sure.
Yeah, why don't we withdraw it and make a new motion to include what Commissioner Kaupu? Or maybe you make a motion to, we should withdraw it and just yeah, withdraw it. Okay, so okay, so you guys have withdrawn your motion?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, you'll make the new motion.
Do I need to restate the whole thing or let Leo work on it and then?
Try to summarize.
Okay. So the, the motion is to go with the recommendation from staff on items two and three in their submittal. Oh, sorry, items B and C in their submittal. But for item A, we are going to renew everyone on the exhibit with the exception of the following. Those were highlighted in green because they're already terminated. Those that are in category one and are highlighted yellow because they've become current on their ROE. And those in category two, which you go and confirm that they have not made their payment. We are not rolling over those.
Before we move on, category one and two, just for everyone's information, what write of entries are that on the category one for?
It's 527, Waimea Valley Farm. But I think he's, she's gonna move into, to three. So, so that would just be
Yeah.
Hawaiian Steam.
605.
Chair, how about this? How about, how about we continue the meeting and let these guys come up with a complete list of the ones that we are not rolling over? And then I'll make the motion based on that. Because I think you guys understand where we're getting, right? Including the ag and pastoral and the fact that that's we're not terminating, we're just not renewing, we're putting them in holdover because we're going to case-by-case basis determine whether there's somebody on the waitlist that, you know, is looking to move into that parcel.
Unless you want to make the motion generic and then staff can do it like how you say.
Okay.
Because they know which ones to do.
Okay, so would you, how would you do that?
So we'll redo the exhibit.
So Chair is asking if I could do a generic motion. So the generic motion is to adopt items B and C. For items A, only renew those on exhibit A that are not in, that haven't already been terminated or are not, are not current, determined to be current. On top of that, do not renew the ag and pastoral. Put them into holdover so that we could determine whether someone on the waitlist can or is interested in moving on.
Just for clarification, Monale was the one who wanted to do the workout?
539.
Yeah.
So that one, yeah, and you're suggesting we go with the workout? And that's my, that's part of the motion that we do the workout.
Thank you.
What about 636? Where did that go?
That was the cancellation.
That was already canceled. Okay, is there a second? To, okay, it's been moved and seconded. amended motion is articulated by Commissioner Kaupu. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Follow.
Thank you. That's why we're bringing on Commissioner Kaupu. See how good it is, man? Thank you.
So am I clear that they're coming back?
No, no, we've already made a generic motion to accomplish what we have.
A generic motion?
Yeah, yeah. But I've asked Connor to redo the list and confirm that it matches up with my generic motion.
Okay.
Yes. I can share that with you, Patty.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
There's something
We got it.
I gotta look at, where's my Robert groups? That's interesting.
Okay, the next agenda item is D6, HCF, MOU.
Morning Commissioners, Dino Shiro, Lonesome Business Branch Manager, hopefully might not that complex.
Sorry.
We did our homework.
Hawaii Community Lending, MOU.
So Commissioners, for action this morning, as we discussed yesterday during that workshop, is the approval of the MOA, the memorandum agreement between DHHL and Hawaii Community Lending, also known as ECO, regarding the guarantee of interim construction loans. We're asking that you approve the two parts to this action. The first is to approve the MOA that was provided yesterday. And if you have any changes, please let us know. We can make some. And the second part is to delegate to the chairman the authority to execute the MOA upon the completion of revisions if necessary.
Your motion?
So, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Oh, thank you. I passed.
Okay, we're now on the J- agenda, excuse me. First one is Spencer Pi. J1. Okay, Ms. Pi, you're on. You had unmute. We can't hear. Hang on, hang on. Yeah, we can't, we can't hear you. Can you speak up again? Can you hear us? Maybe turn up your volume or Yeah, still no sound. Yeah, why don't you go out and come back in and then we'll move on to the next one. Lydia Kamoku. Lydia Kamoku. Okay, next person, Lily Napoleon. Yeah, Ms. Chairman. The next person, Cindy Freitas. That's one way to get through the items quick. Great technical difficulties and can't, can't hear them. Ellen Cardina. About Keanu. Jermaine, why don't we start with you, since you're here? Hey, Jermaine, would you Morning. Okay. Jermaine. Jermaine, you ready? You know, you can do that later. Wouldn't we sit in and waiting? Appreciate it. You've moved forward. You're, you're up now.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we try the next one? Okay, okay, Lily Napoleon.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry, a little bit of technical difficulties there. Already here on behalf of the Naiva Agricultural Subdivision Alliance, I just wanted to kind of share some of the updates in regards to the work that we have been doing with the leases in conjunction with Hawaiian Community Lending and Hawaiian Community Assets. So we had a couple of gatherings thus far. For the month of June, we brought our leases together and we had a workshop with Hawaiian Community Assets in specific to financial counseling. So a lot of our leases are starting to motion into that direction to really see how they can improve in terms of credit score, in terms of income, in terms of capacity building. So we're, we're really trying to build that capacity and that momentum moving forward in that direction to prepare them eventually to be homeowners. In the month of July, we are focusing on the farm plan. So the Naiva lots are ag lots. And with it comes an original farm plan. The leases were given out back in the mid 80s. So many of those farm plans are outdated. And we were fortunate enough to gather the time of the new supervisor here on Molokai, David Bush. So he will be joining us to kind of take a step by step in terms of the paperwork, the process, who to see at the Molokai office, the length of time that it takes in order for these plans to be approved by the commission, of course, and by the department. But we're also gonna look at different types of illustrations and diagrams in regards to designing their actual farm plan. So doing a lot of it on paper and going through that conceptualizing process prior to the rubber hitting the road. So a lot of planning, a lot of proactiveness in preparation for the infrastructure in the homestead. And then finally, catalyzing that forward in terms of leases residing on the property and actually farming day to day. So just wanted to provide you guys an update, kind of what we've been up to working with the leases, but also using this court as a place to let others know who may have a lease in the Eva or maybe, you know, eventually awarded a lease in the Eva that we do have our alliance here to help to support and really bring these resources to, to the people. Already, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person, Spencer Pi.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. That is working. Hello, good morning, Chair Watson and Commission members. My name is, oh, good morning, hello. My name is Spencer Pi. I currently reside on Anapuli Homestead land. I've been here for over 30 years. So I just wanted to bring up my concerns about just a little bit of history. I, I just got back on, but I don't know if there's a time limit for me to share? Is there a time limit?
Oh, yeah, there's a 10, 10-minute time.
Oh, okay. I should be
A lot of times.
A lot of time. Okay, so I'm currently a recipient of the Hassel Home Assistant Program grant since 2014. My grant number is 10HBGHI001. First, foremost, I want to express how grateful I am to have been a part of the program. My home was in dire need of repair and then the Hassel financed the majority of it. I received a letter from DHHL dated December 5, 2022, that I was required to provide proof of insurance. So I called Milliana Pumai and she, she the one that had the letter on there. And a question about the letter, she stated that I'm required to provide proof of home insurance up to February 2029 due to me taking part of the Hassel Home Rehabilitation Program. I told her, according to my calculations, I was kind of thinking in my head, the loan duration should expire February 2024 because I started in 2014, not 2029. The timeline from 2014 to 2024 reflects 10 years from the original date from escrow funds was received. So a little history on the First Amendment to the lease agreement was dated July 11, 2014. And that would extend out 20 years, making it end at 2034. And we're talking about the, my lease, not my lease, but my lease agreement with the Hassel Funds. But to my understanding, after signing the Second Amendment to the lease dated February 14, 2019, I didn't know that my loan duration date would restart from February 14, 2019. Extending the loan out to February 2029, I was thinking that my loan duration would end 10 years after I got my initial funds back in 2014. That's why I was requesting amendment to the lease to be retroactive from the original February 14 date when I received my funds and/or be settled in full if possible. So on December 19, 2021, 2020, 2022, I attended a DHHL community meeting at Anapuli Community Center and spoke with Cedric Dorte. 2022, I attended a DHL community meeting and Anaculayal Community Center and spoke with Cedric Dorte. And I spoke to him briefly about my situation. I handed him a copy of my letter and he said he would have someone from the Hassel Department to get in touch with me. After two weeks of no response, I called Cedric and he said that he had delivered a letter to the Hassel team and someone should be getting back to me. I reached out to Meliana and on January 18, 2023, I also called her and left a voice message on January 26, 2023. On February 2nd, 2023, I called and left message that Nini Al and Meliana's voicemail. So I just kind of like on history, what I was trying to get this settled because I was kind of thinking a while. So we started in December and then we now in February 2023, I received a response via email from Meliana regards to my letter. She stated the following on amendment lease. So she was explaining that the Hassel affordability period of 2014 is 20 years, which I just said. And I already knew that, but she said that when changed in 2019 from 20 years to 10 years. So I did my research and I found out in 2016, it actually changed from 20 years to 10 years. The availability period for the Hassel. So I sent an email back there, just the response on the same day. Letting her know that if I could change them because I was wrong, if I could change them to 2016. So making my availability period end on 2026. So I sent her another email response. So on May 25, 2023, I requested it to be placed on the J agenda because really what is, wasn't getting any answers. I was kind of unfortunate because I had to actually come before you guys and, you know, be on this meeting because I was not only asking about that, but I was asking about the Hassel.
Oh, sorry buddy. They skipped me and then I've got to wait a little bit more, but I thought I'd give you.
Oh, hello. Okay, sorry. So due to the lack of communication to my request, I had formally requested to be added to the June 27, 2023 AJ Agenda, which is today, a couple of holiday. Holly, it's unfortunate that I had to get to this point. And this is kind of like the email is talking to her about this is unfortunate that I was giving her a heads up, her and me now to let them know that I was going to come before you guys to bring up my issues. And that's what I was seeing in the email. So this is part of the email. So I'm writing this email so you and Kinni Law will not be blindsided when my concerns are brought up in front of the board. Over three months of not responding to my email, I think is long enough. I did add what was being discussed to the meeting as attachment. So I actually gave them the attachments, what I was talking about, what I found out. So May 29, Kinni Law responded via email stating that I was correct about the 2026, 2016. The affordability period would change from 20 years to 10 years. He said, however, as your letter details, the First Amendment to the Lease Agreement letter was dated July 11, 2014. Notarized on July 15, 2014, the funds in escrow in February 2014. So she was explaining the same thing that I knew that because it was dating 2014, the period was 20 years. But when we got the Second Amendment letter to my lease, it already started again. So the 10 years started for the 2019. So she basically said the same thing. So we are, she stated, so we are unable to reduce the affordability period beyond the reduction that you currently have from 2034 to February 2029. So I replied to Kinni Law via email the same day stating, thank you for your response to my email for taking the time to respond. I do understand affordability period was reduced, but I don't understand why another amendment cannot be made to shorten my affordability period to 2026. Is there, there was no lease amendment because none was drafted in 2016. So as I responded to her and I, to me, it never makes sense. If I could go back and amend the lease and I wasn't too sure if she could do or somebody else could do them. I really already was answer if she could do them, it was fine. I would kind of talk to her, but she brought up that the commission is the only ones that could do it. So on May 30th, Kinni Law responded to my email stating, I appreciate your request. Nevertheless, would like to, the lease redone and I have to revert back to 2014. Extending the, extending the availability period back to 2034, which I mean, I'm not trying to do that. I mean, and I'm not trying to seem like I'm unappreciative. I am appreciative of, you know, Department of White Home Lands and what you guys do for the leases. But I just was confused if, if my concern was if I could go on out a lease to just shorten that three years because of the policy was changing 2016. That's my, really my question, if I got to bring before the board or she could do them.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Pi, I think we got the gist of your situation. We do have the head person with the department that's handling the Hassel. So why don't we let her, you know, kind of give an explanation of your situation and advise the board, the commission as to what we can and cannot do. So.
Saloha, Commissioner Lehuak Kinni Law Kano with the Hassel Program. As you folks recall, HUD did a presentation last month of all of the requirements. One of the requirements is the affordability retention period. That affordability retention period is reflected in the housing plan. In 2014, that housing plan reflected a 20 year affordability period for the amount of the assistance that this lessee received. He is correct, in 2016, it reduced it to 10 years instead of 20 years. And then since then, it's been 10 years and that's been the affordability period. So for the Hassel, it's very difficult to just selectively say, oh, well, in 2016 because it was reduced to 10 years now, we will, we will amend this lease to 2016. There are many families who received assistance in the different years and they have the affordability period. So this lessee is already in theory getting a reduction because it should have been 2034. And yes, the lease was redone in 2019. So it's already reducing to 2029, five years. And I, you know, frankly couldn't see a basis to amend it to 2016 because we have other families again who have been assisted. And now if we allow this one less see, what is our obligation to all the other families that were assisted during that time period? And so, you know, while I appreciate the ask that is being made, I just, you know, couldn't in good conscience see what's the basis to, besides the fact that the housing plan reflected a lower period in 2016 and since then has been at the same period as a 10 year retention period. So that's, that's why, you know, I provided the response. I know it wasn't the response that the lessee wanted to receive, but that was the basis for that, for that response. So just wanted to.
Is that, is that a policy decision or is that a legal decision? Can we legally make that change?
In our housing plan, every year we have an affordability period. In 2014, for the amount that this lessee received, it was 20 years. He's correct that in 2016, it was reduced. But what is the basis for which I can now say 2016 instead of 2014? The lease was amended in 2019. He is correct that at that time it was 10 years. So he's already getting a reduction of five years from the original retention amount. So it just, it, it just causes me to pause because what about everyone else who received? It's not as if he can selectively choose that, oh, well, I like the retention period in 2016. So even if I got the assistance before then, I want to, I want to amend my lease to, to submit and, you know, amend my lease. So it's 2016 now and it shortens the period. I don't feel we have a basis to make that change.
Leo, can I ask, what is the affordability period that's measuring his MI or?
So the affordability period is what HUD requires when you use the Hassel funds. And it requires that a low income family remains in that house during that time period. So it's just wanting to make sure those funds are being used for a low income family. That's the intent for that.
So this beneficiary, his concern would be that his family would exceed the affordability limit. So they want that to burn off sooner.
They wanted to burn off sooner. So God forbid anything happens to this lessee. If his successors are still meet the income affordability guidelines, it still continues.
What happens if you don't meet the?
If you don't, then there is a recapture amount, yes.
Okay. And then.
So I wanted to just bring up one more point.
Can I ask another question before you, before you bring up that point? On the Hassel Program, when you do an amendment, when the program's amended, are those, are those changes retroactive or is it just as a, you know, so the period changed from 20 to 10?
Well, it went from 20 to 15 and then to 10. So in 2015, it reduced to 15 years and then in 2016, it reduced to 10.
But those, those changes don't work.
They don't retro back.
And then is the program, is the Hassel that when this person who has a, you know, has a loan, when they come in and do an amendment, then it, it starts a new period each time?
So from what I can tell in the file, as I understand it, I'm sure that Lessee can say. So this program originally was administered by the county. And so the county had this program and then the county shut down the program and then the Hassel stood up the program. I think he was caught in this in between when the county shut down and the Hassel. And that's why there was a gap from when he originally applied to when the work was actually completed for the home repair. So long story short, you know, I think the administration, again, this preceded me, felt that, okay, well, hey, we not going to give him the 2014 because I was 20 years, but in 2019, when it was amended, he did get the 10 years, but it's from 10 years from 2019. It's still five years shorter than it would have been on the original.
And that's how consistently we do with all of the borrowers under this program?
Whatever the affordability period at the time that you access the resource, that's the affordability.
Including if they amend, then it's from the date of amendment, what was the affordability period at that time? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Let's see, so I guess we're not really resolving. We have a situation where you're still subject to, even though it's a reduced amount, it's not the 10 years you want. Does he have a appeal process or can he request a contested case hearing?
I, I've never had this situation. This is the Hassel, right? So these are federal funds. I've never had a situation when you involve versus the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act process, right? So.
Well, if you were to approach the Hassel people, the federal, on the federal side and make this request, and if they were to say, yeah, it's okay, we'll go along with it.
I'm almost positive they will kick it back to us because the Native American Housing Assistance and Self-Determination Act is from the department to make, through this commission to make those.
No, if we want guidance as to whether we can do it, wouldn't they be able to give us some guidance? We will take the action, but.
The guidance will be, we can set the retention period, which is what we did in 2014. It was 20 years.
To 15.
To 15 and 20.
Now he wants to 10, so I guess.
Well, he is on 10, but he wants it from 2016, not from 2019.
But he wants to reduce it from 15 to 10.
He has 10 years.
He has 10.
10 from 2019. He wants it from 2016.
Right. Mr. Pi, I guess, you know, we really can't take this action, I guess, without guidance, which they probably kick it back to us. But then again, I don't know, I can't speak for them. You've kind of, we've articulated the position from the department standpoint. You're free to, you know, explore the, what you're asking with the Hassel federal officials. We don't, we're not going to prevent you from doing that. But at the same time, if you want to maybe contest a case here and you can, the, it's kind of laid out in our regs. That's about the situation we have here.
Yeah, thank you Chair, but yeah, so I read the the policy from the federal side, there's no retention on the Hassel fund. So yeah, like all Kinni Law said, it's actually you guys' decision to lower it however you want to. And I'm pretty sure that's what they was doing to load availability period. They're not, I don't think they're going to make the decision, it all going to be on your, on your side as far as the state side and how you guys handle the funds because you guys set the availability period. And to my understanding, you guys can retroact the amendment because that, well, I might be wrong, I might be wrong. I'm not saying that, just to my understanding. But in all cases, I mean, I wanted to bring up the point, we started like seven months ago at this issue. And here we are today and, I mean, I appreciate all the work that you guys do and especially Kinni Law replying back to me. I got all the information that I wanted except that one issue was with my availability period being knocked down to a few more years.
We understand what you say, Mr. Pi, and we appreciate your time. We do have 12 other people who got to talk to you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Next person we have on the J Agenda, Cindy Freitas. Okay, good, good morning. Okay, Cindy, you're on. Okay. Okay, hopefully Cindy can resolve your technical issues. Next person, Alan Cardenas.
Hello, Commissioner. Great to see you in that chair, Chair. Hello, good morning. I got a couple of concerns with our neighborhood security watching on Anaculayal, but I'm just going to bring it, narrow it down to one. This is in that, that home in Kialana that has been causing problems for the last 18 years. It is still a pain in the neck. It is still a problem. Many of us believe in our community that it's an honor and a privilege to have, to be a lesee. But with that said, it comes with a shared and personal responsibility to add value, to make the place better. It has been problematic. I'm here this morning to ask for your help, bold courageous leadership to help us to stop the problem. It is still a problem. It came up at our neighborhood security watching on Anaculayal and in Miley. We just, we just need help. So it's on record, Chair and Commissioners, it is that home. We, we just need help. Can you guys help us out and stop the problem? It's just one individual and this individual is just bringing shame on the family name. Even the family is disgraced by what's happening at that home. I've been meeting with that family for months now. They're trying to do something to clean up their, their name and that property. I know that you guys had a contested case hearing. I'm not sure what the status is on that, but all we need right now, Commissioner, Chair and Commission is, we need your leadership. Can you guys help us out? And I'm sure Patty Turiya has the latest updates. Commissioner Turiya has the latest updates, but we need you guys' help. So I'm here, clean, asking on behalf of the family, on behalf of our community, can you provide bold courageous leadership to shut down that house in Kialana? So that's it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, appreciate it. We actually have four cases we're looking at. It's involved in some, I guess Attorney General. Uh, some, I guess Attorney General's Office. Yeah, the Attorney General's Office is taking action on four different uh homesteads. We can't go into the details, but uh. I believe one of them is uh the one you're talking about. So we are trying to show the leadership and a lot of times it involves uh. Some judicial intervention, which, which is what we're doing.
Can I just, Mr. Chair, can I just thank, um, thank, um, our pastor, Pastor Alan Cardenas for. For being here and expressing these concerns in the uh Nanakuli Homestead. Again. We work together at Neighborhood Security Watch in our area and appreciate um our pastor being here, being so diligent and uh working with our community. Thank you, Pastor Alan. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I'd like to echo that. You know, I have uh experience working with you and uh keep up the good work. Thank you, Pastor.
All right, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, staff. Love you guys. Bless you guys. Ahuiho.
Aloha. Chair, can I, can I, so your, your comment was there's, there's four of these that are kind of going through the process right now. Uh, so I, I remember reading there's a change in the law recently or maybe it was proposed, but where the property owner. Uh, not, not necessarily the operator of the legal activity, but the property owner may be liable or responsible. Kind of like how they do with the drug, uh, drug houses cases. Are, are you, are you familiar with that? No? Okay.
Okay, the next person on the J Agenda is Cindy Freitas.
Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Um, my concern is the vacant lots in Lake Yopua. I'm from nineteen ninety-five. I had sent notice about vacant lots in Lake Yopua and I understand you. You guys never had it at that point. But eleven years ago. You guys have in um area five. Numbers of vacant lots that was sitting, sitting over eleven years, about eleven years now. And we come from a background of construction. Eleven years ago, the homes, package homes, cost fifty-four thousand for bedroom to back. Now it's up over a hundred thousand, eleven years later. My concern is the vacant home, I mean vacant lots that hasn't been given out, not one of them, for years. It's a shame that a lot of us um been voicing this and some of us has passed. Just waiting for the vacant lot. There's infrastructure, sidewalks, there's fire hydrant, there's everything you need. To build a home. As a homeowner builder. And it's a shame that it's sat for eleven years. And now I assume in the general plan as rent to purchase. And you guys only giving out ten. Thank you. At least it's moving for ten, but still it was way overdue. It's way overdue for the vacant lot as prices increases, interest increases. We have diligently, the people, the beneficiary waited so long. The question is, how, how long more do we need to wait? Time is ticking for a lot of us. And today, I can't even, I can't even step foot on an empty lot. I waited forty years. And I put it in writing with the, with Hawaiian Homestead in nineteen ninety-five. I even kept all my documents. So please, please move the vacant lot faster. For some of us who I'm mistaken. And we wanna leave some, something at least to our next generation. And to ease the problem of inflation that is happening today. You know how much a two by four costs now, let alone a T one eleven? It costs you more money. When you guys had the lot eleven years ago, already infrastructure lots, ready to build. It's a shame. It's sat. It just sat. In La Yopua Phase Five. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me just uh respond to your comments. Uh, I agree with you that uh. There's definitely been a failure on the part of the department to move these vacant lots. And so uh. We're actually uh doing an inventory of all throughout the state and all the different homestead areas. As to all the vacant lots, including the lots with houses that maybe need a little renovation or be, or need to be torn down and replaced. And so we're, uh, we're actually bringing on someone as of Thursday to specifically head up uh a program whereby. We'll uh, I guess, kind of tally up all these different lots that you're talking about, including those that. Uh, in some cases are new awards, uh, and there are strategic plan. And then uh put it out on a RFQ whereby we not only will make the awards, but we'll set up a developer. Uh, agreement whereby we'll work with a developer to provide options for the people on the waitlist that are being offered these vacant lots. That they can choose. Uh, if they're elderly couple, they might want a two bedroom. If they're a large family, they might want a three, four bedroom. But we'll tailor not only uh and make the awards, but we'll also facilitate the uh. Uh, constructions of homes if it's a residential lot. And then uh we're also working with Habitat and Self-Help and depending on the number of units, uh, we will uh take an approach that uh. Will help the person coming off the waitlist to actually uh facilitate their construction of a home. And that's depending on their income. We're also looking at uh working with the, a local small contractors. Uh, so depending on the location, uh, maybe like uh, uh, you folks have a, a business that we can work with and. Uh, maybe we can uh provide maybe five lots to you folks that you can kind of move forward and get the construction going on that. I, I do wanna uh try to work with the communities to rid these areas of vacant lots that are really an eyesore and. There's no reason why it should remain uh vacant. So, but I'm also looking at uh. Providing business opportunities for especially the native Hawaiian contractors out there that are looking for work. And so it's a combo of not only addressing the waitlist, but also providing business, but doing it in a way that's a lot more effective. Rather than what's been done in the past, you know, like a one or two lots being uh. Uh, renovated and then awarded. We gotta do it in a more efficient manner. That's uh. What, what I'm gonna try and do with the help of uh some people we're bringing on. Uh, so, you know, just be patient. Uh. Uh, hopefully, uh, and even on La Yopua, there's uh maybe five hundred twenty-five lots that we're looking at in moving forward on. Uh, working on the water issue, availability. So I think we've supposed to be resolving that, but there is gonna be a lot more awards. Uh, in La Yopua, including uh using the different approaches that uh I think will help get people off the waitlist. So we, we thank you for your comments. Uh, we understand what you're talking about and trying to address it. Yes.
Um, a question. You had mentioned you bringing on board somebody to help with this.
Right.
My question is, what's the simple homeowner builder? Is that part of the issue? This is an issue been going on a long time that should have been ratified a long time ago. My question is, I'm noticing you guys are bumping off homeowner builders.
No, not really. We're gonna make some of the lots available for the homeowner builder. We're setting aside a certain percentage of the five hundred twenty-five. There will be finished lots. Again, finished lots that would be made available to the owner builder. Then we'll also make some lots, a certain percentage available to the Habitat for Humanity. And we'll also make a certain lot for turnkey. And then also we're uh gonna expand our, our light tech or rent to own. Approach uh where a person doesn't have to qualify for a large mortgage. It just has to be income qualified. Can't make. Uh, no more than a certain uh uh income in order to be a uh participate in that program. So there's a variety of approaches that we're gonna use, but it is not excluding the owner builder. We're actually gonna uh move forward on making. Uh, a certain percentage of the lots available to those that would like to take that approach.
Okay, um, I understand that. But for homeowner builders, we waited a long time. Now you bundling everything together. Where it's might take another five years or so, maybe.
No, it's not. No.
Well.
Not gonna take five years.
Look at you guys' past history.
Well, we have a six hundred million that legislature in twenty twenty-two made available. That's uh, we already, uh, this commission has already identified uh through a strategic plan, which included uh village one and two. Uh, whereby we're moving forward on that. We've already uh, uh, in the process of acquiring the land. Uh, which will provide the water, uh, which will allow us to move forward on those. The existing villages, uh, village five, four and three. Uh, one, uh, we have the infrastructure going in and we're gonna do a, a turnkey on that. Another one, uh, we're proceeding and the. Uh, developer has already been awarded a light tech award, so we're going forward on the rent to own option on that one. In the habitat, uh, I think they've done ten of twenty. So we're gonna try and move them and uh see what the. Capacity issues is on that one and try and get that up and uh going. And then some of the uh finished lots we'll make available for the owner builder in La Yopua.
Okay, I understand all that, all that whole, that whole plan of you guys. My question to the board is, how long would it take as of today? How long would it take for the homeowner builders to get in there and start building?
But those can, uh, we, we have some lots already done. Uh, they already improved, uh, their vacant lots. So those will get moved. Forward pretty quick.
How, how, how?
I'd say the, by the.
Last year.
By this year. By this year.
Okay, before it for that, is that only ten of them?
Uh, well, ten of them are with the uh Habitat, but we might, depending upon uh the. Capacity for the Habitat, we, we may adjust that. Again, you know, we gotta check it out and uh. See what the interest as well as the capacity of the uh people we're working with, including the developer.
So we have a choice as a homeowner builder to pick our own developer?
Yeah, you can get your own, or you can develop it yourself.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, sure.
We, we are in that realm of construction and we have a lot.
We, we encourage that, but uh you're kind of a, you're, I wouldn't call it exception, but there aren't that many that are as. Qualified as hopefully you are, uh, with your bonding capacity as well as your, you know, we wanna make sure that um. You know, whether you do a, a, you know, a, a supplier finance bond versus uh. Qualifying for, and again, I don't know what kind of, we, we have all these different loan products, but all of that will be available to you. And we look forward to working with you if you're one of those that are interested in taking that approach.
Okay, sometime this year, you said?
On the owner builder. Yeah, we have some lots that are ready to go.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, the next person on our J Agenda is Connie Rollins. Okay, uh, next person, Jermaine. Yeah. All right. You got a PowerPoint impressed.
On yourself, that's the first.
Moving up.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today regarding my J Agenda concerns. I have three concerns that I'd like to share with you today. Um, first, I wanna cover my Ohana. Who are the Lesis in my Ohana and who are the waitlisters? Just numbers, not names. Um, Hawaii Energy Renewable and why I'm in support of geothermal and ask for your support of geothermal as well. And then number three is Oahu Residential and Ag opportunities for Lesis and successors such as my Ohanas. And our waitlisters such as my Ohanas. My Ohana, Lesi and waitlisters. My Ohana, um, my mother is a hundred percent native Hawaiian and she's from Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead. On second row on Grandma's lot. Uh, she has thirteen siblings and sixty-nine nephews and nieces. My dad has, is seventy-five percent native Hawaiian and he's from Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead on fourth row. And he has fifteen siblings, ninety-two nephews and nieces. So for my parents, I have three native Hawaiian siblings, twenty-eight native Hawaiian uncles and aunties. And one hundred and sixty-one native Hawaiian first cousins. My mom and dad are on the waitlist. Me, I am a Lesi. My three siblings, one is a Lesi successor. Cause she got Grandma's lot and two are waitlisters. I, for my uncles and aunties, twelve of them are Lesi successors and sixteen are waitlisters. And for my first cousins, seventeen Lesis successors and one hundred and forty-four are waitlisters. So for just three native Hawaiian generations in my Ohana, there are thirty-three Lesi successors. And one hundred and sixty-four waitlisters. I haven't, I don't have the numbers for seven generations. And I believe for, you know, almost three hundred, maybe four hundred if you add all of my generations and. So my concern regarding Hawaii Energy Renewable and why I support geothermal. So first of all, I went to the US government and looked at this month, what is it, what do they say is Hawaii's profile on Hawaii energy? Specifically electricity. So Hawaii Energy for the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three report. From the US Energy Information Administration. Our Hawaii State Energy Profile Report states that one hundred percent of its electricity. Must be generated by renewable energy sources by twenty forty-five. The renewable energy sources that we use in Hawaii specifically or are looking into are solar, wind, geothermal. Biomass and hydropower. Right now, as of today, thirty-two percent of Hiko's electricity are from renewables. And sixty-eight percent of Hiko's electricity are from petroleum-fired fossil fuels. That's how much percent that we need to make by the time twenty forty-five. We need to convert sixty-eight percent of the electricity to renewables. Right now, as of this month, we have one point four million population and half of that is civilian labor force. I want you to note that Hawaii has the highest electricity retail price of any of the fifty states and it's nearly. Triple the US average. Our electricity for residential is three times higher than the average for the US. Example, they pay fifteen cents on average, we pay forty-five percent, uh, forty-four cents. Um, per kilowatt per hour. On commercial, they pay three times this higher. Right now, US average is twelve point five and Hawaii pays forty-one point nine. For the industrial classification, they pay electricity five times higher than the US average. The US average is seven point nine cents and the Hawaii is thirty-eight cents. Oh, sorry. Hawaii Energy Renewable Solar. So like, first I wanna look at solar. Because that seems to be where we're putting most of our bucket into renewables. The lifespan of panels estimate to be twenty to thirty years. It is a potent source of hazardous waste, the panels, where components that contain. where components that contain toxic heavy metals such as lead, selenium and cadmium. It has a potential to contaminate groundwater. According to the environmental progress, solar panels create three hundred times more toxic waste per unit of energy than do nuclear power plants. About ten percent of panels are recyclable, however, ten to thirty times more costly to recycle than dumping it in the landfill. Renewables for wind turbine, the lifespan of a wind turbine blade is approximately twenty five years. About eighty five percent of the turbine components, materials such as steel, copper, wire, electronics and gearing can be recycled or reused. However, the blades are not. Um, they're made up of fiberglass, a composite material to be lightweight for efficiency, yet still durable enough to withstand storms. The mixed nature of the blade material makes separating the plastics from the glass fibers to recyclable into workable fiberglass material is different and end up in landfills. Uh, combined in the landfill at this time between between um, solar and wind turbine. It's, it's as much as it can fill up the landfill that is, that makes up two um, Mount Everest mountains at this time. Electricity sources worldwide reserves are anticipated to be depleted fossil fuel between twenty fifty and twenty seventy. That's why our state legislature said we must go into twenty forty five. Natural gas will deplete in between twenty fifty to twenty seventy. Uranium between twenty ninety to twenty ten. And coal between twenty fifty to twenty one seventy. Oh, yeah. So therefore, geothermal needs investment of time for technologies to advance, the same as solar and windmill. And improvements are made through using the equipment and technologies. So solar and windmill, there's been much two to three times more years um, times years of being in production and trying them out and refining the technologies. So what I'm saying here is that we need to invest with geothermal in that same manner. So that we can take it like from the Wright Brothers on airplanes, now we're in spaceships. Same thing with computers, now we're in artificial intelligence. And same thing with geothermal, we just have to invest in time and using those technologies to improve them. So just as a reminder, the electricity used by all residential, commercial, industrial, education and government. We use it for computers, air conditioning, refrigeration, lighting, signage, devices, industrial and commercial equipment, et cetera, et cetera. And now my last concern regarding Oahu Residential and Ag Opportunities for Lessees, successors and waitlisters in my Ohana, seven generations. So right now, because we started off in Nanakuli from grandparents. Um, it's really, our family always wants to be close to Nanakuli Homestead. And the reason for that is, it's easy to get babysitters and kupuna care, because we put together our resources. Handicap, my sister just lost her leg last year, it was amputated. And so she's now a handicap. And so I'm asking the commission, what are the Nahasta opportunities and how do we find out about them? I hear them in the meetings, but my family doesn't know about them. I don't see anything put out from the department, so I'm asking, can you please tell us about Nahasta opportunities such as the one that the gentleman explained about earlier? Agriculture opportunities. Again, in Waimea Moku, why? Because most of my family started from there. And so with our eyes, so that's why I was asking about the ORIs on DHL land in Waimea Moku, so that it'd be an opportunity for my family that would like to get into agriculture, et cetera. And bring income and food to their homes. Waitlist opportunities for my waitlist families. Um, is that could be Uloke Kukui? Is that Miley and Kapole developments? Out of all my Ohana that are Lessees, only one is in Waimea Manalo. Three is in Kapole and the rest is between Nanakuli and Waimea. Kialkuapu, God bless all of you.
Oh, good timing. Thank you, thank you, Jermaine. Or any questions or, okay. Thank you. Okay, the, is Kania? Okay, the next person is Giani Rollins.
Aloha Chair Watson, honorable commissioners. I do have a PowerPoint. Um, am I able to share my PowerPoint?
Okay.
Okay. Can everyone see my PowerPoint?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Mahalo. Okay, again, mahalo for having me on the agenda today. The reason for this request is um, I, there's been an issue with our Molokai regional plan update uh, from twenty nineteen. And um, I wanted to amend our plan, our, well, our community uh, wanted to amend our plan, but there isn't an amendment process. And so I just wanted to quickly go over what the administrative rules uh, for the, the plan is. Oh. Okay, so uh, general plan, the department shall develop and maintain a general plan providing development and use of land needed for the purpose of act. General plan shall be based on sociological, financial and economic considerations and others. Uh, general plan framework, the planning system shall uh, consist of a three-tier hierarchy of plans. Tier one is a top tier consisting of general plan and shall establish overall policy, as you all know. Uh, tier two and tier three are the lower tiers and shall be guided by the general plan. Tier two and three focus with um, increasing specificity on programs and or geographic areas. Uh, tier one is the general plan, which is amended every twenty years. Tier two is island plan, which is amended every eight years and tier three is the regional plan, which is supposed to be amended every four years. Um, so I'm focusing on the regional plan. The, the plans in tier three, which is the regional plan, shall be reviewed every four years and updated at the discretion of the department if an update is justified. Okay. And then there's an, an opportunity for interim amendments between comprehensive updates, tier one and two, which is the general plan. And the island plan may be amended upon beneficiary consultation appropriate to the plan as set forth in section ten four sixty and a majority vote by commission. Initiate, initiation of this amendment shall be as follows and it goes through the details of how it will be followed. Um, however, there is no interim amendment process for amending regional plans, which is tier three. Okay, did I stop share? Okay, there we go. Okay. So um, I'm coming before the commission today uh, to ask your help. Um, because there are no, there is no process for tier three to be amended and um, the regional plans have been in place for more than four years um, generally and um, you know, no criticism to the department. Uh, but that's just the way it is. So the last time the um, uh, regional plan for Molokai was amended was in uh, twenty ten and then in twenty nineteen. And um, when the, this regional plan was updated, um, there, there was a an issue with um, how the process went. And um, so there were five priority projects and um, whoever uh, attended that one specific meeting um, was given the opportunity to vote on what the priority um, on the, on the, the order of priority, the projects would, would um, be in. And um, there, there were several meetings and a lot of community members who attended, myself included. Um, let staff know that we wouldn't be able to attend that one meeting where it, the vote would be taken. And there was no really real other, other opportunity uh, to um, try to uh, vote in a way that was more reflective of uh, the community's desire. There was a thirty day uh, feedback period um, that uh, I, I guess, community members could have um, you know, asked the commission to undo the work that was recommended by staff. Um, but the community members um, were either not ma'at to that process or um, you know, didn't think that things would have turned out the way that it has been. And um, you know, the number one priority project is the uh, Ualapu'e Kuleana Lots. And Commissioner Helm has been at beneficiary consultation meetings where more people, more beneficiaries have come out in opposition of that project than voted to have that as the number one priority project in our regional plan. And I understand that staff is following the regional plan. And so if process is the problem, then we need your help in amending the process so that we can help staff not be in uh, between a rock and a hard place in not abiding and, and following through with what the regional plan says and what the community at these beneficiary consultation meetings are saying. Um, so um, a, a suggestion, a suggestion would be um, to add tier three to ten dash four dash fifty four C, which is the interim amendments, so that there is an amendment process for regional plans. Um, I'm also open to other suggestions and if uh, others would like to work with me on this, um, and I would be happy to help um, explain this to the community and um, get their input and feedback on this. Mahalo Chair Watson.
Oh, thank you, um. Andrew, you wanna kind of respond to that? Because I know we're doing something uh, concerning the community input and taking I don't know about amending or doing an interim amendment to the regional plan. But what's, what's your thoughts and what your comment?
Um, mahalo council member for um, raising the um, concerns that you've been hearing from beneficiaries. Um, I think there are um, a couple of issues um, that we need to take a closer look at. One is um, um, looking at um, council member's suggestion to amend the administrative rules which would require us to go through our administrative rule process and beneficiary consultation in order to do that. Um, so we can take a look at her um, suggestion and see if that is an effort that um, the department and the commission would like to undertake to go through the administrative rule process to add that um, option to um, tier three plans. Um, with regards to the process um, issues that council member uh, brings to attention. Um, it is a planning process. Um, planning processes are meant to be inclusive, are meant to encourage um, dialogue and feedback from our beneficiary communities. Um, I think if the issue was that folks needed to appear on one night and one night only um, to be able to help identify priorities for the community, we can definitely um, look, take that feedback um, and look at other ways folks can um, identify priorities outside of that one meeting. I know in other regional planning processes, when we've worked closely with other communities like um, Anahoah, we just updated the regional plan. We provided several opportunities for beneficiaries to identify their priorities um, to us. From what I recall from the Molokai Regional Planning Process, which did occur four years ago. Um, it was, it wasn't, it, the number of beneficiaries that um, voted for the Ualapu'e project. It was a significant amount more than what the second place, third place, fourth and fifth priorities were identified. It wasn't, it wasn't just a hair more, it was a lot. Um, my understanding um, is that um, a particular um, beneficiary who was championing the um, settlement of Hawaiian homelands in Ualapu'e um, was able to um, network and get other beneficiaries to come out and participate in the process. Um, which is something that, you know, we want to encourage beneficiary participation and getting beneficiaries, not just to show up, but to get others um, to show up to our meetings. Um, so I, I think if there is a problem with the selection of that particular project as a priority project, I think the the dialogue should be um, continued as we go through the settlement planning process for Ualapu'e and to see if there are any ways in which we can better mitigate some of the concerns that might have been raised um, with settling um, these lands with our beneficiaries via homestead. Um, we are trying our best to find a balance between um, providing homestead opportunities to those on the waitlist as well as trying to respect the concerns and take into the concerns of um, the current um, community members of Manai who have been there for generations and we, we don't take their concerns lightly when we come out to meet with them. Um, we are trying our best to find a balance between um, those who have known that place as their home for generations as well as our beneficiaries who are from Molokai, who would like an opportunity to homestead DHL lands in Ualapu'e.
Okay. Thank you, Anne. Um, okay, so we uh, I guess we, there's this balancing act and there's input. Obviously, uh, there is this, I guess, competing uh, views that are in conflict. Uh, so there is this process where we do take the input, we consider it, the commissioners, how to make decisions. Uh, I think we, we've done the outreach. Uh, regarding your concession, your suggestion that we uh, do interim uh, change to our regional plan. I don't know, I think we're kind of far along and uh, we're in the EA process.
We are um, going to be starting the EA process in the next several months. We will, we are in the process of scheduling a community meeting, not a beneficiary consultation meeting, but a community meeting with um, the East and Molokai community um, in the beginning of July. And um, share our, our draft settlement plan, looks like the areas that um, we feel are suitable for homestead settlement as well as areas that um, we've concluded are not suitable for homestead settlement. Um, we'll go over the number of lots and um, the analysis that we went to um, make this preliminary um, suggestion as the settlement plan as well as um, how we made our best efforts to incorporate um, the concerns and manao that we heard along the way through our um, I think it was about five other um, community sessions that we held.
Okay, yeah, so I, I guess there is gonna be an opportunity for uh, those that, you know, whatever their views may be, to express their particular views and articulate it, uh, that'll be incorporated. The process, which is kind of set up statutorily. The process, which is kind of set up statutorily, um, you know, that, that will provide you an opportunity. To, you know, uh, express your concerns and uh, I guess all of that would. Be taken into account and uh you have a record, so to speak. Then the EA, uh, you know, that also results in certain action being taken by the commission. So it, it's an ongoing process. This isn't uh like a one month thing. It's about nine months or it's pretty involved and. Kind of protracted. Um, typically, uh.
Chair, Chair Watson.
I'm sorry.
Chair Watson, may I ask a clarifying question? Uh, Mahalo. Is, so is it a foregone conclusion then that the Ualapu'e area will be. Uh, developed into lots and when I say developed, I use that term very lightly uh or loosely. Um, as in it will be awarded. I think that's maybe a better, better word. So will these lots be, will, will this area be turned into lots and awarded? Is it, so beneficiaries. If beneficiaries say that they do not want that area to be um uh. Turned into lots and awarded, will, will that not be considered? I- is it already a conclusion that it will be?
No, there's no conclusion. Uh, that's a, like I said, it's a process that's ongoing. Uh, this next step. Uh, is environmental assessment and that's a process where, you know, we get all the input, we look at it from an environmental standpoint. Uh, we also take into consideration uh the views of, you know, different parties. I mean, it's clearly this, there is a demand for uh, for uh. Additional homestead leases, especially by people on the Molokai waitlist. So we can't ignore that. So we, we gotta, you know, address their needs. Uh, we may look for other lands. Uh, we are in the process of uh. Soliciting uh offers of other lands. In fact, uh. Uh, Walter Riddy, I saw last night and he was talking about us buying Molokai ranch, so. I mean, depending on the price, I mean, that's something I might uh present to the commission to consider and it might be better locations and all this other stuff. But as to Ualapu'i, you know, that, that's an ongoing thing we gotta consider because that is homestead. Uh, belongs in our inventory, so we gotta consider it. That's the lands we got.
Right. Mahalo for that feedback, um Chair Watson, and um I, I hope that suggestion from Mr. Riddy is something. You're considering. I would fully support that and um be happy to continue dialogue on that.
And maybe you guys can put some money up on that idea. That'd be good.
Chair, can I, can I ask Andrew a question?
Sure.
So Andrew, the process, when people are voting on the priorities, that particular meeting is a community meeting or it's a beneficiary?
It's a beneficiary consultation meeting and again, um. During our regional planning process, um it's meant to be as inclusive as possible for our beneficiaries to provide their manao. On how they want the department to prioritize its time and resources in a particular region.
Got it. So, so notice goes out to everybody on the Molokai island wide list and to all of the existing. Uh, beneficiaries that see.
That's correct.
And then the dynamic for this particular meeting, it was just beneficiaries that were voting. But the vast majority of them prioritized Ualapu'e as their top priority. And it, it looks like those that were in favor of that. They, they were, they rallied, right? They, they went out and, and got their people to show up. I, I'm guessing, but are the, are most of these people waitlisters? They're, they're waiting to see, they're waiting to get their leases versus. The folks who are opposed to the project are those who already have their leases. Is that? Is that a fair summary?
I'm not quite, I can't confirm what the demographics were, who voted or who not, who didn't vote. Um, but I, I do hear um council members' concerns about making sure that there is. Um ample opportunity for beneficiaries to provide the department with. Um, feedback and guidance on how beneficiaries would like the department to um. Provide or allocate its time and resources in a particular region and I, I think um. Set, I guess, looking at recent regional planning processes uh like Anahoa um. Where we um tried to expand the opportunity for people to input into priorities. Um, it's definitely something that we can. Look at and adjust going forward.
So the statute that was shared, the, the procedure requires an update every four years?
It requires the department to look at whether or not an update is warranted. Um, I think. Council member pointed out that prior to twenty nineteen, the last time the Molokai Regional Plan was updated was twenty ten. Um, we, we. I know this is, sounds like a broken record, but we um are limited by the amount of resources, funding as well as staffing. Um, at the rate at which we can update our twenty-two regional plans across the state. Um, thanks to the commission uh at yesterday's budget approval, we are looking at increasing the rate at which we update these regional plans. Uh, we're looking to do four um in the next fiscal year. Um. So, yeah, we, we, we understand that the regional planning process is an important tool for the department to use to engage with our beneficiaries. And the more frequency in which we can utilize this tool, um I think it creates a better dialogue between the department. Um, and our beneficiaries as well as the commission and its beneficiaries. So I think. Um, if I can put a plug in for um future budgets, if we can get more resources to. Um, update our regional plans more frequently, I think it might help to better um increase and. Um, improve the dialogue between the department and its beneficiaries in particular regions.
Okay, Andrew, uh, we, we got three more uh people to testify, so uh. Councilperson Rollins, we appreciate your time and uh your input and we'll take into consideration your suggestion. Thank you.
Mahalo, Mahalo Chair Watson and Mahalo Commissioners and uh Mr. Choi, and I just wanted to uh make one correction. Uh, it's not statutory, it's admin rules. So the administrative rules is amended by the department and not through the legislature. Just. Um, wanted to make sure that was clear.
I, I'm sorry, uh, there are a couple of comments, Commissioner L.
Yeah, thanks Chair, Aloha Kiani, thank you for your uh testimony. Yeah, um. I did attend the island uh plan, but what, what year was that? Andrew, it's about three, four years ago.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you mean the regional plan?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that was, uh, we started the, the commission approved the update in twenty nineteen and I believe the update process began in twenty eighteen.
Yeah, so there were like five projects that was selected and Ualapu'i had the most uh. Votes, I guess, for that particular, so that was number one. But as uh, as time has gone true, uh, we've seen a lot of uh people getting more involved in uh, in the process. So um, you know, whether some were for or against, um but. In July, I believe we'll have a, a community beneficiary consultant meeting. So that'll give another opportunity for those people that um. Um, wanna. Give their input and, you know, whether they for or against. And um, and then we, we just gotta go from there. So we just have to allow the process to happen and then we, we can decide what's best for. Our beneficiaries, you know, but uh, I, the whole bottom line is, you know, we have to. Put Hawaiians on, on the land, you know, that, that is our priority, you know, and, you know. I, I wouldn't want anybody else but Hawaiians to go back on their land. So if, if we bypass this opportunity. So, you know, and then people say certain areas in, on Molokai or wherever is. Lands are sacred, but even the land I'm living on is sacred, so it's, it's. You know, we just gotta allow the process and see where it goes, but I just wanted to thank you, Kiani, for your concern and your, yeah, mahalo.
Okay. Any, okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next uh person on the J agenda, Bo Kahui.
I can't start my video, but um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, here we go.
There we go.
I never brushed my hair yet, but.
Good.
Whatever hair I've got left. Anyway, uh, uh, thank you Commissioners for allowing me to testify today. Uh, uh, I am the Executive Director for Laipu Community Development Corporation created in two thousand and eight. For community economic development. I also am a board member on the Hawaii Island Habitat for Humanity. I serve on that board. I just returned on that board. And previously served eight years. Um, first, I'd like to uh just kind of respond to uh Cindy Freitas's comment earlier. Which, which will segue into my uh, my testimony. The village five lots that are, that had been vacant for many years. I believe there, there had been issues related to the water and water of availability. Uh, in addition, um, uh, at that time Armstrong Development was the developer. And we had not since heard about um, uh, the development of village five. But um, even at that time, I think uh when Habitat came on board to build. A total of fifteen units, uh, five, and then we did uh ten units. Uh, we built ten units in ten days here while I was on the board at that. Uh, uh, even at that time, we've, we felt that um, and we brought it up in our uh regional plan. That much, much more has to be made uh or done uh for those that ha- had been on the waitlist. That are uh, uh, do not qualify for low economic uh housing opportunities. Like the rent to own, the option to purchase, even as much as they have been on the uh waitlist uh longer than those. That may have leaped from those residents. So we're, I, 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 I share that because I think uh some of the residents or. Waitlisters that have been waiting now are hoping for an opportunity. Including those that have undivided interest award. That would include my brother. Um, uh, or um my, actually my daughter who assumed, uh succeeded his lease. Uh, for some time. And anyway, he has an, she has an undivided interest award and we're looking forward to the opportunity to uh get my daughter uh on the land. Uh, with respect um to um, um, the empty lots now, you know. I, I commend the, the department um in its effort to accelerate those lots. That either sit empty or, or homes that are vacant or um, and we. Uh, like I said, I commend the department in accelerating that. Um, previously, it took over seven years to get one new tenant in the one of these homes here. Um, and, and, and now just more recently, about several weeks ago. You boarded up a house, the department boarded up a house on the corner of my, of my um, uh block. Uh, that Haleo Lono place. Um, uh, so I'm hoping that it won't take. Seven years to find someone to assume that lease. Um. Um, the tenant has since passed away and, and then, of course, there were other issues that may have re- um. Uh, resulted in this particular action. And this is a good segue to uh the point of um my, my, my testimony today in the Holoa Water Source Development Project. This is a, an important project. Uh, we understand that department supports uh the acquisition. Of one hundred twenty-nine acres uh for water source development that will provide significant amounts of water. Water credits um for the full buildout of Laipu'a twenty, uh, Laipu'a, the villages of Laipu'a. And when we're talking about full buildout, we estimate somewhere is about eight hundred units, eight hundred credits. And um, and each household is required to have at least one credit. Um, amounting to about six hundred gallons per day, I believe. So we appreciate the department's support, you know, for the source development and that acquisition for that parcel. Um. Uh. We, we understand that there is an LOI that's being reviewed by the Attorney General. Um, we have, uh, the owner has requested um a, a Zoom meeting for. A status of that. Uh, so I sent out a Zoom to the staff. As well as the current owner and the attorney um to update uh the committee stakeholders and LCDC. On the uh letter of intent and the purchase acquis- or the acquisition for this property. Briefly, it's been about seven or eight years since we first initiated this project. I wish we would have acquired this uh. And, and done the development for water long ago. Maybe uh parcels like village five would have been completed. But that's not the case. We're living in the present day and then I'm hoping that the. LOI will be fully executed soon. Uh, and then we look forward to the update this Friday. Um, uh, by the department and by the attorney of the opposing party. Lastly, um, this Friday on the thirtieth, I believe, and Deputy Katie Decat as well as uh. Um, Jalen uh from your broadband um initiative will come to the county in corner. Um, to discuss, uh, yes, uh, uh, the ACP plan. As well as the broadband initiative initiated by the state accounting. I hope they'll bring some kind of synergy um in, in which um both the department, county and the state. Could uh, um, help our community and maybe the communities uh. Uh, homestead communities on this island um to accelerate uh, you know. The um, uh, ACP plan and broadband in itself. Um. And I'll conclude by saying that um I've been working with Kuhiyo five G. Um, well, and um, for some time, uh, I understand. The, the, how the broadband is, is gonna impact our communities um in a very positive. So I, again, I, I hope that the commission would, is, would take a look at the. Their uh broadband connectivity program. I understand that Hawaiian Tel was awarded. The RFP to map out um across the state. Um, um, a inventory and assessment for broadband and broadband development. And um, so I, I think it's an important step in these four homesteaders that this is taking place. Um, uh, I'll entertain any questions and thank you for the opportunity and, and thank you Commissioners as well as uh Kali. Um, for your service on, on, on the commission.
Any comments or questions? If not, uh, both, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the next person on the J agenda, Blossom Fitera.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, uh Commissioners. Uh, mahalo for this opportunity to speak on several items today. I. Uh, you know, one of the things, because we have to sign up for J agenda uh so early on before the meeting, um I listed down Act two seven nine implementation, but. I, I'm not real sure what I want to talk about on that since we covered that yesterday. So I'll just go ahead and start. Uh, for regarding item C four, um, thank you again, uh, Commission and uh. Mister Com- uh, Mister Chair for another opportunity for beneficiaries to participate. In the development of legislative proposals. I have been a strong proponent of establishing a compliance and enforcement division within the department. Um, that would provide statutory authority and police powers to the enforcement uh division for DHL. And uh, I, once again, I commit to following through on that uh this upcoming session. So mahalo for that. Uh, uh. Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I need to inform you that, uh, late last night about ten thirty, I, my phone started blowing up with a bunch of angry beneficiaries who said that, uh, the department was invited to a private dinner with the Secretary of the Interior. Uh, and why wasn't beneficiaries informed of her presence and why wouldn't, why didn't we get an invite as well? Um, it is my understanding that, uh, the department did get a last minute invitation to meet with the secretary. She is in Hawaii for the Conservation Congress, um, a conference in Hawaii. So, uh, if there is at any time an opportunity for you to do a brief debriefing, if you had that meeting with her and what she had to say, uh, I would really appreciate that. Uh, I think it'll go very far in helping to diffuse the, uh, emotional upheaval in our community regarding this, uh, last minute information. Uh, they did get an email from Robin Diner stating that you, um, the commission was meeting with Secretary, um, Holland for dinner last night and that she hoped, uh, beneficiaries were invited to that gathering, uh, which kind of set everything, um, up in arms. And then finally, uh, there's been an ongoing issue in the Hilo District Office regarding a beneficiary who is on the waitlist. In fact, she is, I'm hoping that she's still on the call. Um, Shana Lisa and Kanai, who is number twenty-five, one-nine on the agriculture waitlist for Hilo, took advantage of an opportunity for a sale of an ag lot, uh, in Hilo. Um, uh, this started in April of this year. Uh, the property, the lease in question was abandoned in twenty nineteen and was put up for sale by the lessie. Uh, Shana did start the conversation with the lessie. They agreed on a sales price. Uh, Shana then took the transfer request to the Hilo District Office and was promptly denied, uh, because apparently the lease property has some unpermitted structures or renovations that was done to the house. And your district managers refused to process the transfer request until those, uh, uh, violations have been resolved. Now, Ms., uh, Kanai, uh, had offered to take on the Kuliana of, uh, addressing those unpermitted issues, uh, to the point where she has come up with a construction schedule and has been talking to a general contractor to help her and is willing to pay for it. Uh, but that is not something that is acceptable to your, um, Hilo office manager. Uh, and so she is looking for some kind of resolution to this issue. Uh, you know, she got a prequalification already and as time ticks, that prequal may have to change due to the rising interest rates. Um, and so, uh, Mr. Chair, bring this to the commission, um, attention, uh, to see if there is some way we can get some resolution on her behalf. So, uh, that's it for me, uh, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for the time. I know you guys are going into, uh, um, executive session soon, so I will end here.
Thank you, Blossom. Uh, the next, uh, person on the agenda is Faith Chase.
Aloha Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes, it can.
Aloha Chair, aloha Commission. Um, I, at the last meeting, uh, Maui Commissioner Randy Owo was the interim chair while you were, um, on your, uh, travels. And he had, uh, indicated to a testifier, Kaleo Cullen, who is the said president of Ka Ohana O Kahikinui, otherwise known as Kuuk. And, um, I was sharing concerns similar to Hawaii Island concerns, which I'm not sure if you got to re-watch that whole meeting, but the concerns of the fire fuel because of tall grasses and the removal of animals and, um, the introduction of gorse. So, um, my testimony was actually pretty easy after hearing all the testimony from the Hawaii island about the concerns of the fire fuel that is created from um, animal eradication and then the invasive species of gorse. So, um, at that meeting, Randy Owo, uh, Commissioner Randy Owo, uh, instructed the, uh, Mr. Cullen to solicit my input. So for the first time in five years, I was, um, I was actually on the agenda for the Kuuk, for the Kuuk Board Meeting, which, um, I had been trying to, I've been trying to find a space to share, um, my subject, you know, area expertise for five years. So that was, uh, fortunate. I just wanted to recap that information that I shared with that board, that I have strong objections to the right of entry that was given to Levi Rita. I don't feel like, and I've said this before to these commissioners, I, I understand that I wasn't able to get on the agenda to share my concerns. So those decisions, um, that were made for that ROE, I don't blame my commissioners for. But as Andrew has, um, indicated about, you know, the preliminary process and identifying priorities and reaching out the EA process, none of that was done for that or right of entry for for Levi Rita. So, um, I, I spoke to my concerns because in Kahikinui, the grass is six feet tall, we're hitting summer. Um, it's not, it's not animal management, it's eradication. Um, as far as the accountability goes on how many cattle and how it serves the department or the Homestead Association, I clearly left that to the homesteaders, uh, the Board of Directors of Kuuk, you know, if they wanted to ask those kind of questions, but those questions do, uh, those do come, those do worry me. I, I am, I am interested in those, particularly what was immediate was the use of, uh, so, um, lidar sirens that the helicopters were using to help get the cattle out of the forest. So I approached Levi Rita personally and I told him that was not, that is a breach of your contract. You're not supposed to be doing, first of all, you're not supposed to be doing eradi-, uh, you know, animal removal eradication in the homestead area. That is not part of his ROE. And nowhere in there was ever an EA to do any of that, that sort of siren in the Vau Akua. I'm sorry, I, I like to, I like to make sure that, um, my Maui Commissioner is listening, so I pause every now and then. Um, so this is a high concern for me because you have this huge issue of protecting the upper forest with uh, the native bird population and, and the tree growth and all these things. And those pollinators are important. And you cannot be doing this sonar, this, this loud siren, I mean, up in the forest and then act like you're helping to protect the forest. Uh, there is, it's, it's, it's just, it's just painful to listen to. So I, I actually got Levi Rita to agree that he would talk to the helicopter pilots or, you know, stop using that technology because it's difficult to get up into the upper forest to get those animals. Um, but they're gonna come down anyway because they need water. So there's all these methodologies that would have, an EA would have served well to have and benefit, certainly full beneficiary reach. Um, I got to speak to the Maui County Fire Chief, um, Chief Brandon, uh, Brandon Ventura at the Calpol meeting because we have a landslide on the backside and he came to talk to the community. I got to share my concerns with him about rotational grazing, serving as a purpose to help build water and soil remediation and to help, to help be part of the fire prevention. Um, that was, I felt like that was productive. I'm just telling you all these things because my concern still is the same. And the ROE, while I had asked the Kuuk Board to, you know, suspend the ROE or to alarm, you know, set, set those clear parameters of the breach of contract, that is on to them because that is the ROE that you, that this commission gave to them. But in the longer process of everything, the, the, the bigger process, the long, you know, the long range goals, the, the board, the Board of, uh, Ka Ohana O Kahikinui is well aware of the bylaws that need to be changed. I've said this for years. It's just too small, it's not making full beneficiary reach. That was my second concern that I shared at the meeting and I know I've shared it with the commissioners here. And I just want to, I, I keep putting the Community-Based Economic Development and Makai Management Plan as my subject matter because I'm returning to this document that's twenty-three years, that has this great framework that doesn't just help Kahikinui, but it actually would serve other growing communities. So I want to read, uh, one paragraph. And if my time gets short, please, you know, do me a favor and let me know. Much depends, and this, this is the section that has to do with governance and internalization of community activities. Much depends on the extent of social capital that Ohana generates. That is the ability of the community to cooperate and coordinate through an agreed upon involuntary practice norm within which mutual assistance and collective actions are possible. This will be crucial to the realization of its vision. Social capital within an intentional community is a created asset. Many sources of pre-existing social ties like kinship, inter-family exchanges, subsistence network and longstanding acquaintance would be missing when intentional community first forms. These assets can be generated by intensifying interactions within a community through entry point issues like shared resources and interests. The Ohana understands this and has created a common ground for all members to find a participatory link in the process of organization building. However, the real challenge will follow only after these entry point issues mature into a process where individual fulfillment actually becomes possible through community efforts. That is, until community members feel that they, the deeper benefit of being in the community can be best realized through com- common rather than in the individual pursuit of interest. The goals of self-government will remain contested. So now that we have a water, which I was instrumental in making sure that that federal drought emergency grant brought two thirty thousand gallon tanks to the homestead after twenty-three years. They don't have to go all the way to Ulapalapua to get water, it's at the bottom of the gate. This is a shared resource in which the Ohana and the community can maybe start to realize that they're working together on something large. And I just need you guys to know that, um, when I was asked, what is my position here? Like who do I represent? I represented myself because I'm a kipuhulu backside raised girl. And that whole mountain, that whole Kahikinui aquifer, that is my church. That is, that is where I grew up. And I don't, if there's a new community that gets created, Calpol Ranch is supposedly just being sold to Kamehameha schools. I will be knocking on their door and watching every move they make as well. So when, at the end of the day, somebody asks me who I am, I am not a leaseholder. I am not a successor. I have tons of family who are leaseholders. I helped my nephews build a house there last year. My daughters are successors. I am only coming to you as a steward position. I'm only coming to you as a, as somebody who loves that whole Haleakala mountain. And I just want to be clear about that. And in no way, shape or form do I, I mean to insult the decisions of this commission, like I've said three times before. But this is, anything beyond this ROE needs to have what Andrew, you know, Andrew has impressed upon in other issues. A full beneficiary reach, an EA process, a planning process, identify priorities from the community, all those things. None of those things have been done with this ROE right now with Levi Rita. And, um, there's an eighteen-page report that, uh, precedes your, your, your position as, uh, Chair, um, Chair, and I will make sure that you, um, get that. And it, while it's a long read, at least the full story is there for you to understand the depth and the scope of this issue. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, let's see, uh, it's almost twelve noon and we have, uh, three more people to testify. So why don't we, uh, take a break for lunch? Okay, well, lunch is not here, so let's not take a break and keep on going. Okay, sorry about that, gang. I know you're all hungry, but, uh, no food, no, no sense. Uh, let's, uh, Janelle, Kaohu, Kawai, Kawahi, excuse me, uh, you're up.
I just wanted to be real simple. So what you have in front of you, my main concern is my son had, um, oh, sorry. So my son had applied for succession ship. Um, I was notified by my cousin's wife that she was losing, um, the place because she was non-Hawaiian. And so she said, oh, the public notice is coming out, go and go apply. So my son went to apply. My issue with this whole thing is there's no mention on the public notice and application that states that you cannot be a cousin. So my son applied in February. I was told he was the only applicant that went in. I updated in March, they said nobody put in an application. I received the letter seventeen days after expiration of April seventh of the final notice of the application. My concern is if the department knew that my son wasn't qualified from the day he applied for the application, why did they accept his application? Why did he have to wait till seventeen laters after the expiration of this notice to be notified that he wasn't qualified to be a successor? It said blood, that's my cousin. My cousin's grandpa and my tutu is brother and sister. So why is he not qualified? He's also been on the waitlist since November twenty-seven of twenty nineteen. I know there's a lot of people on the waitlist, but I also teach my kids in order to get off that waitlist, you need to be prequalified. My son is mortgage ready. So what can we do a- after April seventh? If no family members come forth for this property, does it go to the public? Would it, my son be, it, it would be the same as if he applied as somebody getting it as a public notice? What steps does he have to take?
You got a response?
Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator, um, from, uh, what has been testified, uh, it appears that the lessie died without a successor. Uh, the department proceeded, uh, based on section ten three sixty-three with a public notice, uh, calling qualified relatives to come forth to submit their succession ship claim. Uh, qualified relatives are noted or, or named in section two oh nine of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. Uh, the testifier is correct that a cousin, uh, relationship, um, is not a qualified familiar relationship to the lessie. Um, again, as you're aware, uh, the qualified relative, relatives include the spouse, child, grandchild, brother, sister, uh, parents, widow and widowers of the children, widow and widowers of the siblings as well as nieces and nephews. Um, cousin is not a qualified, uh, successor to a lease. Uh, with respect to, uh, receiving the claim, uh, again, uh, we receive, uh, claims to any succession ship, uh, pending succession ship, um, and we, because we're juggling so many, staff is juggling so many, um, transaction at one time, it's not unusual for the discovery to be made after the, uh, publication period or a hundred and twenty days after the first publication. And it sounds like this is probably the situation here.
I actually had to call to find out what was the update. Nobody knew that the application was even processed. And I said, well, I have it, it's stamped dated back in February. And then after my conversation, um, I didn't get it to the twenty-fourth. So what's the process? So if nobody puts in as far as, uh, you know, somebody who passes away and the process expires, what is the next step the department does?
In, in, in the event of, uh, the department not receiving any claims from a qualified successor, uh, the department would then come to this body uh, and request that the lease be canceled, uh, due to no qualified successors coming forth to claim, uh, to succeed to the lease.
Okay.
And that property would then be made of, uh, available for a homestead opportunity for the next person on the waitlist.
Even if there is somebody that's mortgage ready?
That's correct. We, again, we're, uh, we're tied or we're obligated to follow, uh, the, the policies prescribed by the rules in it, uh, the act and the administrative rules.
Okay, so I was told by my cousin's wife that she's been prolonging her appraisal because she wants the house to go to somebody. And, you know, we know my family history. I mean, I know what's happening, but she's been holding off on getting her house appraised because she wants to make she's been holding off on getting her house appraised because she wants to make sure it goes into the right hands. I don't have that, you know, authority to make. So she was just concerned. And did you put in your application? Did you dis? So I explained to her that my son wasn't qualified. Um, but I just wanted to know what, if there is anybody, I mean, I know you got to bring it back to the table, but because he submitted an application, wouldn't he be the applicant to look?
No, he's not a qualified successor. So we cannot consider him as a successor based on the Hawaiian Homes.
What, what about the proceeds? Uh, you know, granted, the guy uh passed away without a naming a successor and his own, when I identified, uh, how does, how does the department treat that? Is there appraisal and the?
There's an appraisal.
Do let's see, uh pace for the value of that and do the proceeds? Go to the decedent's uh family?
Yes. Any, um, any spouse.
Spouse would get it.
And or child.
Or child.
And or child, yes.
Yeah, they would get the.
They would get any net proceeds due.
Okay, so it's not like the family is totally out. They get the proceeds.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. We, we can talk offline um and, and try to get some of your concerns addressed.
Okay, you want to do that? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, no more lunch. Okay, so next. Okay, uh, Robin, Kealii, Noho, Moku.
Aloha, Kakao.
Aloha.
Aloha, Maikako Chair. Hold on.
Aloha.
Okay.
All right, there you go. We can see you now.
Okay. My name is Robin Kealii Noho Moku. I am the owner of Maui Vegan Foods LLC DBA Hawaii Juice Company.
Nope. Nope, you have to get back on. Okay, uh, while you're getting back on, we'll go to the next uh testifier, Keone Kailoa.
Hello, Chair. You guys can hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thanks. Um, so uh currently right now, I'm the president of villages of Laipua. Uh, currently, for over a year and a half, we've uh, we've had a request for proposal for use of some space that was designated for a community park. Um, since its inception, you guys know, pretty sure all of you guys know that our park never came to fruition for one reason or another, but most likely was, you know, obviously it's the, it's the water, yeah? So with that being said, our community uh would, you know, we don't want to waste the space. Again, we're not, we're not trying to ask you guys for get us water, get us anything else. But we put in a request for proposal and yeah, we're frustrated at the fact that we haven't heard any feedback. Um, you know, there was nothing that came through for us that um, we've had multiple talks. Uh, Commissioner Makai Freitas has uh graciously joined us during uh multiple uh meetings. And uh in his efforts to, to look up our situation, um, nothing came about. So I'm here, one, just to ask the commission uh to see if we can get any information or any feedback based on our proposal we submitted uh back in January of twenty twenty-two.
Kukana, you're familiar with this proposal?
I am familiar. Um, we're working with the planning office also in reviewing that. Uh, I know we haven't responded in writing. I've talked to Keone a couple of times. Um, and since then, uh I still have to get something in writing back to him.
What, what is, what land is he talking about?
Up, up in villages of Laipua that's by Kialake.
Oh, I see.
There's a park area. It's a park.
Oh, you, you want to turn it into a park?
Correct.
And is that an area we have planned for residential development?
Um.
Um, wait, let me clarify real quick. Well, the area that we're looking at is designated for our community park. It's in the regional plan. It's always been there since nineteen ninety-five.
Uh, he, he is correct. Um, the area that they are looking at um has been designated for a park in the master plan that um HHFDC originally did for the villages of Laipua. The one constraint that um we are looking at um is, I know, I know that Keone folks would like to do uh emu grow um banana stomps to help provide materials for the emu. The one constraint um that we have to deal with is the lack of water. And it's not just a constraint for um his proposed community project, but also for our development projects in um North Kona as well. I think the, the um idea is good. It's just that right now we don't have water to supply um and to help support his, his vision for the, for the park.
Sure, can I? Uh, what if he was, you know, we've been discussions, um, joining I a few times and they say they were to somehow get their own water up there uh through portable uh entities or something like that. In that case, while we go through the process of providing more of a permanent water source, would that be okay? Keone, am I right now, brother, or am I off?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's, again, guys, our, this all came about from our previous commissioner. It's, it's a community, um, it, it's, it's basically a, a community rehabilitation um effort, right? So we're not trying to replace the park, right? What we're asking, what the guidance that we got from the previous commissioner was to take about, you know, just, it's a five acre area, but actually only three acres is actually usable. The rest of it's on a slope, right? We're looking at just one acre to basically put, like you said, like emu hale, you know, banana stomps and stuff to help our community um uh in this, you know, community effort, uh but not to replace the park, right? The park is still the end goal, but because that place has been sitting for twenty years plus, our community is tired of seeing it rot. So we want to make use of the area and not the whole area, just like I, I, in the proposal, it spelled out that way. Yes, Kahana did get back to me and had a couple of questions in writing. Obviously, we responded as far as traffic flow, access, water. You know, obviously, we're not going to use water if there is no water. So in our response, we, you know, it's clear, clearly laid out that we was going to get like portable water tanks because we're only going to use water for feed, you know, a couple of plants, you know, it's nothing. It's not that hard.
Uh, I, I guess my question would be, uh, you're, you're talking about interim use. So once we proceed with the full, full-on park development, would you vacate or are you looking to try and incorporate your activities into the future park?
Yeah, we would incorporate if we could, if we had to vacate for the benefit of our community to, to give a more elaborate part, then yeah, of course, whatever is best for our community. Um, but again, we never know when the park can come. We've been waiting twenty something years, so we're not like, you know, we don't like wait another twenty years.
Hmm, I'm kind of wondering if uh emu uh activities would be compatible with a park uh designation and use, now you got kids and all kind of other uh park goers that, I mean, there's a safety issue. Uh, but not to say that uh, you know, emu activities, I mean, that's something very culturally uh appropriate. Uh, it's just the long-term use and integration that you might be talking about uh may entail uh, you know, certain s- safety measures as well as uh separation activities and all of that. So I don't know, I think that's something we need to talk a little bit about more about. And uh, I think if you can uh maybe do it on interim, at least if, if that is inappropriate activities for the future part, then would that be something you'd be uh receptive to?
Of course. Guys, it's whatever is best for our community is what we're going to do. So safeties are number one concern, obviously, you know, the, but I, I, you know, obviously, I'm pretty sure none of you guys have seen this place, so, you know. So, you know, the areas that we're talking about, the places that I put on the map is basically the one that I submitted with the proposal um is not elaborate, right? So it's, and, you know, I live right behind the park and I have an emu pit at my house. And it's, it's, it only takes up, guys, we only live on seven thousand two hundred square feet. If we can fit one less than that, we can fit it all there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what about the smoke and all the, you know, that uh? If you're talking about adjacent to a residential area, wouldn't, wouldn't that be an issue with your neighbors?
Yeah, I, we live in Hawaiian Homes. Everybody smoke meat every odd weekend. I don't know.
You work within the fog. Okay, so it's a cultural thing. Okay.
Of course.
Okay. I don't know, uh, threw that on your lap.
No, I've, I've been in contact. We, we, we kill it a lot and I'm trying to work with, you know, our staff to.
Okay.
Find us. Keone, when's your guys' next uh meeting up there?
Uh, second Wednesday of next month.
Okay. Uh, I'll go, I'll go to staff and figure something. I'll get you the information by then and go from there. But yeah, I think we should try to make this thing happen, brother.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you for, thank you for being patient and thank you for keeping me in the loop too, bro. Appreciate it.
Yeah, um, the second thing, sorry, so, so that was one thing. Um, you know, the second thing that uh I wanted to address was we have, obviously, Ikaika Homes is the um, let's say developer for this uh new lot, right? My question to the board is why, why would you guys give up the designation of being our representative for the lessies in this how, uh, in these rental places to Ikaika Homes? Because the thing is, is that at one point, they're going to have sixty, if not eighty-four votes that can change the trajectory of our whole community. You know what I'm saying? Because they have the proxy for eighty-four votes.
I don't know what you're talking about, you know?
Yeah, there's um, I'm still kind of understanding the whole spectrum of it. But based, the whatever formula is in place, I'm sure if I give that idea, but whatever formula is in place now, it provides that the developer or X amount of votes which can outvote the, the members in the community. Is that right, Keone?
Yes.
Okay, aloha, um, Commissioners, uh. Hello, Keone. I don't think we've met, but uh I'm Stuart Matznaga and the acting administrator for Land Development Division. And so um, uh, a number of years ago, we implemented that rentwood option to purchase uh program at Laipua Village uh for a cow subdivision. Um, this uh project is uh basically run by Ikaika Ohana who um uh received the low-income housing tax credits to develop the project and constructed um the first sixty uh homes uh uh for this rentwood option to purchase. And then they're constructing another twenty-four homes. And they recently got approval to construct thirty-six more to complete the um a cow subdivision. Okay, so um, the, the homes are um on a rental tenancy to uh the, the waitlist applicants. Um, just, but Ikaika Ohana has the um, the site control. And so they're responsible to pay uh for the um the um Master Association dues. And so they um, they actually uh hold the rights to uh to vote, but my understanding is that Ikaika Ohana is trying to organize the community to um allow the individuals to um, to vote. So um, then I don't, i- it's not my understanding that Ikaika Ohana is, is block voting.
No, they're not. I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody of that. I'm not, I just understanding. I'm trying to get more clarification as far as, yes, they can be the site controller. Yes, they obviously going to pay the association fees. But at the end of the day, wouldn't, my question is, as DHHL, as the board, as a commission, my, I guess my question is, do you guys feel that it's best served that you guys leave that entirely to Ikaika Homes? Or you guys would delegate that to a DHHL representative? Because you can designate, right? If it's DHHL, that's the representative, or if it's Ikaika Homes, right?
Uh, we can, you know, we can take a look at that. I think for my, you know, personal is that we should uh allow the tenants to exercise voting uh because they're, you know, they're part of that community. And that hopefully in uh next thirteen years that they'll all become um, they'll exercise the option to purchase the um, the homes and then they will be then converted to lessies. So this is, to me, this is a good um, like, preparation for homeownership and being part of the, part of the community. And so, you know, I can, I can talk to Ikaika Ohana and then, uh, you know, we talk to the chair and then to me, see.
I get it. I guess. Okay, I mean, it seems, I just trying to figure out um, if that's your guys' initiative to move forward, then it is what it is. But I just trying to understand it because, you know, it's so, it's such a gray area because like, you know, you guys say they're not lessies, so they cannot get the vote. That's why Ikaika Homes got to vote for them, I guess. And yet, we, Ikaika Homes going to act like, okay, yeah, there are lessies, but technically they're not. So it's just confusing, just trying to, you know, obviously, we get questions all the time, especially with new homes, new people moving in um, that soon, hopefully, that oh, you know, they go, we do have questions that come to us as the Volaboard. And I just trying to provide clarity to our um, our lessies uh so that um, even though it's not something that the, you know, that we put in place, um, it is part of our community. And uh, I guess the hard part with it is that, you know, uh, this area, like all of Village Five and whatnot, you know, none of that space get any common area, right? It's all from sidewalk to street. You know, they have no master common area. And one of our, you know, obviously, the fear is, is that, you know, we're going to have a redesignation at some point. And then our, our master association common area are going to grow. And therefore, if once that grows to a point that we have to maintain what we, what is master common area, our fees might go up. Right? Because right now, we try to do that the best we can for our lessies to keep our fees as low as possible and try not to change them because everybody live paycheck to paycheck. So that's one of our fears moving forward. It's a concern that we have that's growing. I'm not saying that we've crossed that bridge right now, but that's something that we think about and we get questioned about.
Yeah. Hello, Mike, uh, Keone, I think, yeah, I know we talked before. I just never got a chance to get out there and uh meet with you in person and, and to, you know, to work these things through.
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm confused, bro. So I think I, I need clarity for myself too, to even try to as a plan how to move forward. And I think with the growth that we're looking forward in your community, especially with Act two seven nine funds, you know, we need clarity because we're going to get, you're going to get more members later. So let's figure out how to, I'll work with staff and how to get some clarity situation. We could touch base, uh Stuart has talked to Ikaika Homes, kind of get their mona on it. And I can discuss it with you and kind of get everyone together at some point at the table to get overall clarity, especially as we're moving forward, the more developments in that, in that. developments in that in that area too, right? Is that okay?
Yeah.
That would mean.
Any feedback is good feedback. I mean, it's the most feedback I've gotten for the last, I mean, Khan has been great. I mean, don't get me wrong, Khan answered when I called, but again, Khan has been like, oh, it's with planning. And that only lasted so long in one monthly meeting, huh?
Oh, but yeah, I I try, yeah, I hear you, brother. Oh, yeah, brother, I I yeah, I gotta, I gotta work going to Costco sometimes, I keep calling up, I guess I hit on a swivel over there, I'm walking there. Oh, no, but we'll, we'll. Yeah, so we'll we'll work with, I work on and Stuart and the rest of staff and let's get clarity to see exactly where everything is at right now and how do we how do we proceed forward together on the same on the same wavelength.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, uh, Kiony.
Thank you.
Um. The uh last person on the J agenda, uh, Robin Kiliinoho Moku. Uh, get unmute, unmute.
Okay, aloha.
Aloha.
Thank you. Aloha, Chair Commissioners and fellow Kanaka. My name is Robin Kiliinoh Moku. I am the owner of Maui Vegan Foods LLC DBA Hawaiki Juice Co. and also the executive director of Hui Ulu Ola Maui. Today, I'm here to um speak on several issues. Um, one that I've um brought forward to you in the past. Um, and I am again requesting for a petition, um petitioning D H H L to name me successor beneficiary now to my late uncle, Thomas Kiliimohomoku, to the Wa Manalo Oahu Residential Waitlist for five reasons. One, he was on a waitlist twenty-four years while alive from nineteen fifty-eight until nineteen eighty-two. He was on waitlists a total of sixty-four years until I mailed in his death certificate to D H H L um in twenty twenty-two. And at a later time, uncle had no listed successor beneficiary because his only daughter was deceased. He was hospitalized in nineteen eighty-one in New York where he worked. So he was unable to access the current administrative rulings enacted in nineteen eighty-two governing successorship. In any case, um, the A J R rules require public notice and a six-month period for eligible fifty percent blood quantum relative supply for successorship and that I also qualify for uh myself and my siblings. Back in May of this year, I did receive a response from Nicole, thank you, Nicole. Um, and I would like to take up the offer that she uh presented to me to request for a hearing to review this issue to succeed my uncle's lease application spot of which up until now I have been currently denied. Um, and that's it for that. The next thing, any questions about that?
No.
Um, the next issue, the next thing I wanted to share is um in our April meeting, um, I spoke about uh something together, a pig to address the vacated homes and lots um throughout the Piaina. Um, thank you, Commissioner Patty Turia. She did respond to my email. And what we're going to do is start with Maui. Um, so I'd like to um request for Commissioner Awol um to help me to to show uh to form this working group. And I appreciate his support um that he shared that day in in our meeting back in April. Um, so I'll be in touch with Commissioner Awol, but just um again, um reintroducing this pay to manage the vacated lots and homes on Maui. Um, the last reason, the last thing I'd like to present is um an update of Ka'oukena um CDC located in the Wa'uhuli area. I'd like to share screen if I could. Um, we have the privilege of presenting to the county of Maui's Office of the Mayor, Richard Bissin, um, some of the initiatives and projects that we have going on or would like to have go on coming up in the next year. Um, and it's initiatives that that are happening or will be happening on the hundred twenty-seven acre lot in Wa'uhuli Kailka area. Um, let me finish sharing screen. You're not able to see my screen, are you?
Not yet.
Um, let me see. Oh. Okay.
There you go.
Okay, great. So last month, on May thirty-first, myself along with members, uh board members of Ka'oukena CDC had the privilege of presenting. And today I'm presenting on behalf of Ka'oukena Community Development Corporation. Um, this, what I'm showing you today, is this an excerpt of what we presented at the mayor's office, uh where we are asking for fifty thousand dollars line item for the mayor's budget to fund Project Po'ulu. Uh, an acronym that uh we came up with Etikikua and Amoto, one of our founders for Ka'oukena, along with Uncle Norman Abihi. And the acronym, these are also our members, Emma Yap, Noi Lani Perezza, Jonathan Pistana, Mahesh Cleveland, Antina Pua Alakia, and Aaron Akpa, who's not featured here. But Project Po'ulu um is the acronym for Homeland's O P O Understand Land and the Uses, which is so befitting of what we're wanting to do here um with the training and farming um that we have worked out. This particular um initiative will happen on this hundred twenty-seven acre lot located in the uh Wa'uhuli, as you can see the uh lines that indicate that property. Um, and the dark, the dark patches and blotches that you see um on this bird's eye view is um mostly invasive trees, um that of the wattle. So as you can see, we have quite a bit of work to do to make this land usable, but for right now, we have um clear access to the area that's indicated um inside of the orange and yellow line. So some of the projects that um we are doing are primarily with our O P O, training and enriching the life of the O P O and Ohana members through education and engagement by acquiring agricultural best practices to to live sustainable and healthy lives within our communities and at home. Um, somehow this part is not coming down.
Well, I guess we lost you, Robin. Nobody else. That's enough, right?
That's the end of my agenda.
Okay, well, actually, but if, what's her name, Rob, that wants to get back on? Can she, okay, okay, we're gonna, we've come to the end of today's agenda at this time, uh when we reconvene, uh may be able to take up J twelve, Robin, Kiliinoh Moku's uh item again, so she can complete her presentation. But other than that, uh at two thirty, we'll be proceeding with the contest case hearing, the two that we have. So I'd like to mahalo everyone for participating, for your time to be with us today. We adjourned. No, I don't know about the lunch.
It's coming.